Good morning and welcome to the November tenth, two thousand sixteen zoning board of adjustment meeting. If any member of the audience wishes to speak to an item on the agenda, there are speaker request forms to the left of the dais. Please fill out the request with the agenda number of the item you wish to speak to and hand it to the secretary. At this time, we'd like to ask anybody that has a cellphone or other electronic device to please turn it to silent or turn it off. If you need to take a call, please step out to the hallway. That said, the public hearing on item number one is hereby opened.
take you through some slides. Property is zone medium density residential district. You'll notice it's a corner lot with two frontages. There's an existing structure located. What the applicant is proposing to do is to remove an existing set of stairs on that south side of the property. You can see right in this area and replace them with new stairs. The issue is that they're legal non-conforming stairs. Once they're removed, that grandfather clause goes away and they have to get a variance in order to get into that setback again. Future land use is urban neighborhood and it's on West Boulevard, which is identified as a collector's street. Not a great site plan submitted, but it is showing that the request is just for the stoop in this area and its existing stairs, and we'll get to some pictures of those. What you'll get from this picture as well is that this is an existing small lot. It is only about four thousand seven hundred ninety-two square feet in size. When the minimum lot size for a single-family dwelling is six thousand five hundred square feet, so there's the small lot status that it falls under. In addition, this is a historic structure and is identified, it is in the West Boulevard Historic District. They have been through the historic preservation review and got an approval for what they're proposing to do. Applicant's photos of dwelling. These are the steps showing where there's been damage and why they're proposing to replace them. This is looking at the property to, from West Boulevard, looking to the north and west. And again, you can see where the stairs are located. They're right up along that sidewalk. This is looking Fulton Street to the east, West Boulevard to the south, Boulevard to the north at the southeast corner of the lot. And again, looking Fulton to the west. And this is across the street. And again, a close-up of the steps. For a number of reasons, including the small lot status, butting two streets on the south and on the east, and Fulton Street being, requiring a minimum fifty-two feet of right-of-way and having a hundred foot wide of right-of-way and having a thirty-foot Boulevard on that south side of the property. Staff's recommending that the variance to reduce the side yard setback that abuts a street from twenty feet to zero feet, just for the stoop be approved with the stipulation that a surveyed site plan be submitted with the building permit to ensure that the steps do not encroach into the public right-of-way. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
Thank you, Director. Karen?
I just have a quick question. You mentioned, this is just for the stoop itself, so the staff report mentions just a twenty, the side yard setback, what you're talking about, just for the stoop?
It's just for the stoop. It's the side yard setback that abuts a street.
Okay.
Their front yard setback is on West Boulevard.
Okay, so the motion should be, if we want to approve this, to approve it based on the fact that it's a small, existing small lot? That'd be correct?
You could use that as justification, the small lot, the butting two streets. That would be justification. But we wanted to clarify that the variance should be just for replacing the stoop. They didn't want to include any of the other non-conformities on the property at this time.
Okay. Well, that would be my motion to approve this for the fact that it's just for the stoop and the fact that it's got a small lot with only two front, with two frontages on two side streets, or two streets.
Will you include the stipulation to provide the surveyed site plan upon submission of a building permit?
Sure, I'll include that.
Karen made the motion and John seconded to approve the variance for the stoop only, including the stipulation. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The motion carries. John made the motion to adjourn the zoning board of adjustment meeting. Linda seconded that motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That moves us on to the Rapid City Planning Commission meeting for November tenth. Again, if you want to speak on an item on the planning commission agenda, please fill out a speaker request form along, that's on the table along the left wall, and drop it off to staff. Items one through seven have been placed on the consent calendar and may be approved as a group. Action will be taken on all consent items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration at this time. The findings of this planning commission are recommendations to the city council. The city council will make the final decision with the exception of the following items. Item four, sixteen PD zero four six. Item five, sixteen PD zero four seven. The planning commission's actions on these items are final unless any party appeals that decision to the city council. All appeals must be submitted in writing to the Community Planning and Development Services Department by close of business on the seventh full calendar day following action by the planning commission. Are there any items one through seven that staff would like removed from the consent calendar?
Number two, please.
Okay. Are there any items one through seven that any planning commission would like removed?
Number three.
And are there any items one through seven that any audience member would like removed? The chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar, items one through seven, with the exceptions of two and three. Linda made the motion, Karen seconded that motion, to approve items one, four, five, six, and seven. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item two?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number two is a preliminary subdivision plan to create a four-acre lot. You've seen this before and it was continued about a month ago to this meeting. The applicant is working with another property owner in the area to create a four-acre lot for purposes of transferring some, some land between the two of them. And they're still working out some details on that. And this is property located along North Haynes, at the northern terminus of Chalkstone. The applicant has contacted us to request that it be continued for two more weeks. So with that, our recommendation is to continue to the November twenty-third planning commission meeting.
I'll give that one to John. John moved to continue to the next planning commission meeting. Karen seconded. All those in favor of the continuation, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Item number three.
Chairman will be abstaining from item number three.
Linda made the motion to approve item number three. Galen seconded that motion. All those in favor of approving item number three per staff recommendations, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries with Andy's abstention. Item number eight.
Item number eight is initial, an initial and final plan development overlay to now allow a one hundred and sixty-unit apartment complex. We've seen this one before back in March and throughout the year. Recently, we saw rezoning request for this section of the property from general commercial district to office commercial district. That was specifically for this revised application. Previously, it was moved to the east in where you can currently see the office commercial district. It's being moved to the west and along that east side are proposed ten townhome units. Currently, the property is void of any structural development. Future land use is mixed-use commercial at a community activity center along an entrance corridor. It's just off this Moon Meadows Community Activity Center plan for the future. And Moon Meadows Drive is located along, or is identified as an arterial street. Here we have the site plan. It looks, it's exactly the same as the last time we saw this. The one exception being requested is a height exception, which was previously granted. Based on the setbacks, the adjacent uses, the fact that this serves as a buffer between higher intensity commercial uses to the west and lower density residential uses to the east and south, staff's recommending that the exception be granted. It's basically for an architectural feature. It's still going to be a three-story apartment complex, but with a height of forty feet in lieu of thirty-five feet. And elevation of the clubhouse leasing office. There's a lot of outdoor area in this, as well as parkings being met and landscaping. The one change that was made recently, and it was shown in the preliminary subdivision plan, is the property line actually making a angle like that to ensure access to the adjacent properties to the west. There are a number of stipulations of approval, including granting the exception for the height. Redline comments need to be addressed and other engineering issues. One of the issues identified is the sign, ground sign located in this northwest corner and ensuring that it doesn't encroach into any access easements in the future and providing a site plan for that. Here's looking into the property, the plan development sign and the rezoning sign, which is an associated application on the property. This is looking to the north. This is looking back towards Mount Rushmore Road, as it is now referred to, it's a US Highway sixteen, which is where the community activity center and more commercial uses will come in in the future. And this is looking to the east along Moon Meadows Drive. A couple of timing issues on this one is that Moon Meadows Drive is not yet dedicated in right-of-way, and there are some access easements on the property which need to be vacated before building permit is issued. This is looking into the property to the south and east. And this is looking into the property to the south and west. With that, staff is recommending that the initial and final plan development be approved with stipulations noted in the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for staff on this? John?
Yeah, I was looking at it, there's only one access to this property. That's, is there anything else platted for future access?
There was a second access proposed on the south side on Samus Trail. However, they would need to improve Healing Way on the east and Samus Trail to city design standards. And in order to get away from having to do that at this time, they've removed that second access. However, the fire department has indicated that since the buildings are fire sprinkler protected, they don't need that second access point, so.
Seeing none, I look for a motion. Galen made the motion to approve, per the recommendations. Karen seconded that motion. Andy is abstaining from this item again. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine.
Item nine is a final plan development overlay to allow car wash in conjunction with a convenience store with gas sales located on approximately one point five six three acres of land northwest the intersection of Elkvale Road and South Dakota East Highway forty-four. Let me take you through some slides. It's the location of the property. One thing to note here is that previous planning commission, you did approve a rezone request to rezone those lots that are currently shown as low-density residential district to general commercial district. That would include the vacated school drive right-of-way. I anticipate that, we anticipate that the rezone will move forward, city council, and for second reading at the next city council meeting. So I'll look at the aerial view of the property. The residential uses that are located north of that school drive right-of-way have been demolished. As you'll see in site photos, it's just this building adjacent to East Highway forty-four that's left on the property today. Area shown is appropriate for mixed-use commercial development, and both Elkvale Road and South Dakota Highway forty-four are principal arterials and entrance corridors in the city's comprehensive Look at the site that they're proposing. So the, and this is showing the truck turning movements. We've got the gas canopy and convenience store, the car wash located back corner of the property. The applicant, as requested, with one exception, as a part of this final plan development, that is to allow a forty-six point two five foot tall pole sign to be located right here. Where, and that's an increase in the maximum permitted height from forty-five feet to forty-six point two five feet. While we're here, we should take time to note that during review of this, the applicant was initially proposing a fifty-five foot tall pole sign. But during review, noting concerns, and during the design process of this, they reduced that in an attempt to mitigate the impacts of the sign. They did reduce the request from fifty-five feet to forty-six point two five feet. So we wanted to give the applicant credit for working well with staff to try and find a compromise. The applicant is also proposing a twenty-five foot tall ground sign to be located here, or here. That pole sign is, as I said, twenty-five foot tall, but does include an LED message center. There is no LED message center proposed for the forty-six foot tall sign. It's a landscaping plan on the property. So if you're looking at the proposed forty-six foot tall sign, they are proposing landscaping around the base of that and landscaping around the proposed twenty-five foot tall sign Elevations of the building. We've had Holiday coming in in a couple different locations. We've got two up now. We've got a third in the process of Buffalo Crossing. This would be their fourth location. We know that they put together a pretty good store. The site's clean, well-designed. Canopy for the site. This is a look at the proposed twenty-five foot tall sign. So this is the sign located at the signalized intersection, which would provide primary access to the site. And the LED message center that they are proposing is right there. To give you a sense of the scale of that LED message center in relationship to the rest of the sign, there's a color example of a previous Holiday sign of similar design at another location. This is an elevation of the proposed forty-six point two five foot tall LED sign. The applicant has indicated that their intent with this, the height of this sign is to be able to advertise to Elkvale Road, which is elevated above the base elevation of the rest of the development. So what they're showing you here is, on the right here is the base elevation of the deck of Elkvale Road in relationship to the bottom of the readable portion of the sign on Elk, that's going to be located on the site. A couple things to point out here, there is no LED message center attached to this sign. That car wash and beer sign, beer marquees that you see there are just internally illuminated signs. There are no LED message centers proposed for this sign. As I said before, the initial request was from a fifty-five foot tall, for a fifty-five foot tall sign. So we should note that they are attempting to mitigate the impact of the sign to the greatest extent possible. However, that being said, the Rapid City Comprehensive Plan states that in entrance corridors, pole signs should be avoided and LED message centers should be avoided. These are recommendations of the Rapid City Comprehensive Plan. The Rapid City Municipal Code would allow for a LED message center as proposed on the twenty-five foot tall monument sign, or pole sign, and would allow for a maximum forty-five foot tall sign in lieu of forty-six point two five, as they're proposing today. So based on the recommendations of the Rapid City Comprehensive Plan and as well as based on the request for an exception, staff cannot support the requested exception to increase the maximum height of the proposed pole sign. Let's take a look at the site now. Signs posted on the property. I'll look at South Dakota East Highway forty-four. This gives you a good look at the elevated deck of Elkvale Road as it overpasses South Dakota Highway forty-four. Also gives you a look at the existing structure left on the property today. This is a look at the access point. So this would be the intersection of the off-ramp for Elkvale Road and South Dakota Highway forty-four. Behind this view would be the primary access for the site. I'll look at the intersection of South Dakota Highway forty-four and the access point, looking towards the west. This would be into, towards Rapid City. Just another view of the entire site. This is a look on the north side of the site. These were previously residences, to give you a sense of the change in elevation that occurs over the course of the site. And another couple looks at the elevation difference between Elkvale Road and the site So as previously noted, based on the recommendations of the Rapid City Comprehensive Plan, staff cannot support any increases in height or request for exceptions to the sign code within this entrance corridor. However, you should note that a maximum forty-five foot tall sign would be permitted by Rapid City Municipal Code, and you should be aware that an LED message center of this size would be a permitted use in the general commercial district. So with that, if the planning commission should determine that the proposed exception for the forty-six point two five foot tall sign is appropriate for the neighborhood, and if the planning commission should determine that the LED message center is appropriate for the neighborhood, staff does recommend to approve the final plan development with the stipulations noted in the staff report. We do have representatives from Holiday Gas Stations here at this time to address any issues with the sign, and staff is available for questions as well.
Thanks, Robert. We've got a light up from John Brewer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question. I went out and drove over the overpass, but when you're on the Elkvale overpass, where do you exit if you're east and northbound to get back to the Holiday facility?
Let's see if this helps the discussion. So if you're northbound on Elkvale, in order to exit Elkvale Road and get to this proposed site, you would exit to the east or on this exit here, and the major street plan doesn't quite show it, but you'd exit this direction to this light and go that direction to get to that site.
And exiting going the other direction?
If you're going southbound on Elkvale, you would exit here, right to the site.
And if you are on the overpass, you're looking actually down on the facility? So the additional foot and a half provides what visibility then to the traveling public on Elkvale? Additional to a foot and a quarter shorter?
Well, this elevation shows the deck of Elkvale at the elevated height versus the, and this red line extends across from that deck to where that additional height is coming into play. I don't know if that entirely answers your question, but...
Well, if you go out and you look down on the property, I can't see where the, and possibly the gentlemen that are here from Holiday can speak to it, but we worked an awfully long time on the comprehensive plan, and I believe the council someday will take another look at the sign ordinance. And so I'm, I'm going to be supporting the staff recommendation on this because it actually brings the ordinance and the comprehensive plan to play. And I can't see that foot and a quarter adding any inducement for me to suggest that that would fit the neighborhood better than going outside the ordinance and granting the exception. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Karen?
Thank you. I also have a comment about that, that particular sign. To me, and I drove across both ways and also on forty-four both ways, just to see if I could figure out where that sign was. I went there last night at dark on forty-four. So if you're on forty-four going towards town, you will still see that sign to the right. I mean, because it'll be lit and you'll be able to see it. So it's, it's just the angle that you see it at. But coming from the north to the south, that sign will be, just as you go across that bridge, there will be that lit sign right on the right-hand side, and it's just in front of some of the signs that say, turn here to go to Rapid City. There's a DOT sign. You don't have a picture of that, Rob, but to me, to me, it's in the wrong location. That's what I'm trying to say. I don't like that sign right there, just as you cross that, that overpass. I think it's a bad location for drivers. And, and I think it, it's going to be in conflict with some of the other signage that's out there talking about, you know, you're on this road and you need to turn right to go to Rapid City. If there was another way to get signage to the back of their lot somehow, and, and, you know, if they want to get to Elkvale or something, I don't know, but it just, to me, the location is bad. And so I definitely won't support the extended height. You could cut that height down and just take the beer sign off and, or, you know, part of that, and you'd... of that, and you'd be in compliance with the ordinances. But through a final plan development overlay that we're approving, we have the, we have the right to lower that sign if we want to, or change locations if we want to. I mean, that's part of the plan development. We don't, we don't have to approve that particular sign, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Vicky?
There's specific criteria that we look at based on our ordinance to determine whether or not a use and the design of a use is appropriate specific to a location. And Karen is correct, part of the criteria we look at is the impacts that this use would have on the neighborhood, whether or not it's creating any safety issues. So if there's something that the applicant is proposing that would otherwise be allowed if this were just his own general commercial, we need to look at that criteria and make our comments and our recommendations specific to why it's not working based on the criteria that we're authorized to look at. But you are correct, Karen, through a plan development, we can look at that.
Okay. You know, that's kind of what I would like to see. I'd like to see the applicant take another look at the site and either remove that sign or raise the one on the other end if they want to make that taller or something, to make this more appropriate for that location. It's a tough location because of where they're at, but they obviously wanted that location, so it's not a hardship to them to figure that out, I don't think. I mean, they should have that planned when they bought the property. So I just think, I just think that's wrong to have that lit sign as you're coming into town and on that right-hand side like that, right before that overpass, and it's a lot of traffic through there, especially at school times, and, I mean, there's a lot of activity out there. So anyway, to make it short, I am not approving this plan development at all at this point with that sign there. So that's my comments.
Thanks, Karen.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah?
While you're contemplating your options here, I wanted to add that we, based on direction from the city attorney's office, we should point out that staff has had our conversations with several Planning Commission members as well as city council members regarding this, this particular application and the request, specifically the design and location of the signage. We've, staff's spoken with Councilman Modrick, Councilman Ritchie, Commissioner Bullman, and Commissioner Brewer on this, in the interest of disclosure and expert communication concerns, we wanted to bring that to the commission's attention.
Thank you. Galen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, just wanted to get on record saying I support this with the staff recommendations. I'm okay with having the sign stay at 45 feet, I don't think that will be a big hardship, so I would support it as it's written with staff recommendations today, and I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
If the motion maker would allow, the first stipulation is that the exception be granted to increase the height if the Planning Commission determines it's appropriate. So if the motion maker agrees that the stipulation number one should be that the exception to grant the height exception from 45 feet to 46.25 feet be denied, and that the balance of the stipulations as presented by staff be approved.
That is my intent, yes. Number one is denied.
Good with you, John? Okay. Galen made the motion, I'm going to refer to Vicky's statement of that motion, and John seconded that motion. Commissioner Skoll is abstaining from this item, just want to note that. Discussion on the motion. Karen?
Thank you. I want to be on record to say that the Holiday gas stations and station stores have been willing to visit and make compromises on some things, and they did that up in my area, and I appreciated that. And I just would like to see them compromise on this somewhat also. I know they've lowered it, but to me, it seems odd, you know, if you're going over an overpass, you don't expect to see a sign on your right, and I just think this is a wrong location for that. And for that reason, I am, I am voting no, even on this motion, so I just wanted that
Any further comments on the motion? John?
Did the Planning Commission see an initial plan development on this?
No, the Planning Commission has not seen a plan development on this property before.
Why are we suddenly looking at the final plan?
Mr. Chair, if I might?
Yeah, Vicky?
Again, I can't wait for John and I have an opportunity to have our training session. One of the things that's changed, John, since last year on Planning Commission is, an initial plan development is no longer required. They can submit final, go straight to final if they want to design the whole site out, and that's what they've chosen to do here. And I would guess that probably about 95% of our plan developments are finals, there's very few that we see initial on first, and you're right, John, years ago, they used to do initial and final together.
Preliminary, too.
Or just an initial, preliminary plats, right, exactly. Good comment, John, thank you.
I don't see any further discussion on the motion. In that case, all those in favor of the motion to approve per stack recommendation with the exception of the 45-foot height on the pole sign, please say aye. Aye? Opposed?
No.
So we should probably just do a roll call.
Brewer?
Aye.
Hogsett?
Aye.
Braun?
Aye.
Bullman? Marshawn?
Aye.
Herr?
Motion carries forward two with Andy's abstention. That's the end of the regular agenda, and now we have Drainage 101, Dale Tech.
Good morning, members of the Planning Commission and Alderman Drew. My name's Dale Tech, I'm the city engineer of City Rapid City. I'm here today to give you a little overview of drainage basin design plans in City Rapid City. I should give credit where credits do, Mary Bosworth, our city drainage engineer, as well as Brandon Quaid, our stormwater utility engineer, put this presentation together for me, so we'll get started. Why are drainage basin design plans necessary? Well, where should we start? The best place to start is in the very beginning. Not the beginning of time, but the beginning of Rapid City. As one would expect, early development transformed our range in forest and prairie lands into housing sites and streets and other infrastructure with little or no consideration for the increased potential for stormwater runoff and flooding, as this picture from 1876 illustrates, dirt streets, really no improvements other than leveling the site for buildings and the construction thereof. Moving a little further ahead in time, here's a photo from 1899. You know, back in those times, there were no public water systems, so properties were sited near freshwater sources like Rapid Creek or any springs that may have existed in the area. For the access to freshwater, in addition to, they were aesthetically pleasing as well, a real pleasant place to live. As part of that early development, there was not a lot of thought or effort put into properly conveying stormwater flows, so there were many streets and even private development that were built in low areas that conveyed stormwater. And then obviously, you know, the original townsite of Rapid City, as shown with the 1876 plating there, kind of in the central part of this slide, Rapid Creek cut right through the middle of town. So the city of Rapid City, with the original part of the town as well as the subsequent development and annexations that occurred, occurred right along the creek. So the flows coming from the north and the south to the creek were cut off by the development. There were some consideration given for different drainages that entered the creek, but back in the day, that really wasn't considered. The development just occurred and very little consideration was given to future development or what's going to be happening further up the basin. A little later in time, starting probably around the turn of the century to, I'd say, the early 1950s, more consideration was given for drainage. But it was on a subdivision-by-subdivision basis. People, the engineers at the time, I would expect, looked at, okay, what do we do with the stormwater? And the streets were the primary conveyance elements for that stormwater. And very little consideration was given to, okay, we're going to develop this site, either housing or commercial, the stormwater's going to run to the streets, and from there it'll just keep running to where it always did. So that was the method and the technique back in the early part of the 1900s to address So an overview, the historical management of drainage, it was a piecemeal approach. Is that a bad thing? Well, when we look back in hindsight, yes, yes, it was. However, that's just the way it was done. If there were issues due to storm events, you know, it's crisis control, we had a storm event, had some flooding, maybe we should do something about it. So then the solutions over time were corrective or reactive solutions to address those, those issues created by storm events. And as I stated earlier, the development occurred with no consideration to the basin-wide impacts of stormwater runoff. Consequently, severe flooding and damaging, severe and damaging flooding occurred due to lack of stormwater infrastructure, and we still see that in parts of, older parts of our community where there really isn't any stormwater infrastructure with the exception of the street capacity. USGS, United States Geological Survey, has records, I believe in Rapid Creek, from about 1878 through the 1980s, and even into current times, but there were over 60 flood events in Rapid Creek and the tributaries into Rapid Creek. Some of the more notable ones were June of 1909, 1920, there was a flood, and a number of people were, lost their lives in that, and severe damage to the creek crossings occurred, the 1920 flood. 1952 flood on Rapid Creek, here's some aerial photos showing what that looked like. This is out on the western side of town in the Canyon Lake area along what's current Day Jackson Boulevard. And then in 1962, there was a flood more centered on the tributaries coming into Rapid Creek on the west side of town. Clegg Horn Canyon, Dark Canyon, South Canyon, which is Nemo Road area heading out that way. As you can see, there was damage on Pier Street, damage in Clegg Horn Canyon. And then obviously, the historical flood around here is the June 72 flood, with the loss of life and many millions of dollars of damage that occurred along Rapid Creek through the city of Rapid City. With these flood events that occurred, starting in the 50s, every 10 years had a flood event, that really drew the community to stormwater management, flood management. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, I believe, in the early 1970s, just prior to the 1972 flood, on behalf of FEMA, started the floodplain mapping that exists in town today. Actually, they were working on it when the flood struck, so then they put that on hold and finished it up post-flood. And that was our first set of floodplain maps that the city adopted, and there have been revisions to that over time. I'll discuss that a little bit more in-depth here a little later. So that really put a focus on, let's try to do something instead of just, okay, yeah, floods every now and again, we just come to expect that and live with that. In addition, the Clean Water Act passed in 1972 with an amendment in 1987, required local governments to develop the stormwater management program, which included a stormwater system map, which more or less was interested in what type of stormwater outfalls do you have dumping into your major creeks? And that was to be able to identify any sources of pollution really going into, in this instance, Rapid Creek. So Rapid City had a need to implement a program for comprehensive basin-wide design planning. The technical portions behind that is where and how much stormwater flows in Rapid City. So in the late 1980s, the city began collecting a half-cent sales tax for capital improvements. That still exists today, and those funds are used for streets, partially for drainage, and then also for parks and other capital improvement projects. I should add, since 1989, the city has passed here, most recently, I believe in 2014, a stormwater drainage utility where there is a fee collected, and those fees are now going for capital improvements as well as maintenance of the existing stormwater system. About that same time, 1989, the city adopted the first Drainage Criteria Manual, and that was adopted more or less using the work that had been done in the front range of the Rocky Mountains by what was called the Urban Drainage. I forget the official title, but Urban Drainage System down in Denver, if you will. And they started their efforts back in about the late 60s, so we were about 20 years behind communities such as Denver as far as adopting criteria for drainage and the planning efforts involved in that. So, once the Drainage Criteria Manual was adopted, studies needed to be done throughout the community to know, well, what are the issues? First of all, what kind of existing structures do we have out there? What things need to be built? What things have been built? What are their adequacies? So these technical studies, the drainage basin design plans, develop how much, which is the hydrologic portion of it, and where it goes and how it flows, which is the hydraulic component of that. The objectives, I'm going to be, I'm going to be a slide reader now because we're getting into more meat of the presentation, so. What are the Drainage Basin Design Plan objectives? They're to identify existing and future stormwater problems, identify existing and future drainage facilities such as channels, natural ditches, detention ponds, culverts, bridges, other structures, recommended drainage improvements for the plan, and cost estimates, and some of the earlier plans had prioritization for construction projects. As a rule of thumb for that prioritization, we want to build from the receiving body, which I'll use Rapid Creek as an example, you want to have the drainage facility close to the creek and then extend it up in the basin. Well, as I mentioned earlier, with the development that occurred in Rapid City, it occurred right along the creek, so those facilities don't exist right down by the creek, therefore the further upstream you developed and increased runoff, you don't have the downstream facilities. And then, as part of the Clean Water Act and other... And then, as part of the Clean Water Act and other rules that the state DNR adopted in the mid-two thousands, the city also has a stormwater quality requirement. That's part of the Clean Water Act, that the city adopted requirements for that in about two thousand and nine. So, Drainage Basin Design Plan objectives, also identify major drainage routes to be protected. As I mentioned earlier on in my presentation, there was a lot of low areas where development was occurred that stormwater flowed. So, in undeveloped parts of town, part of the objective, objective of the design plan is to preserve those areas, those low areas, so that stormwater can, can get to where it needs to go. And then, also, it's a guide for the city of Rapid City, other government agencies, landowners, developers, engineers, to use this design and construction of major drainage facilities to look at the, the impacts to the entire basin instead of just focusing in on that development that's occurring. And then, also, assist the city in our capital improvement planning, too. With the sizing that is done as part of the Drainage Basin Design Plan effort, we know what structures need to be installed where and roughly what size, and that helps identify future costs for future projects. What's the goal? Now, the Drainage Basin Design Plan recommends improvements to existing and proposed future stormwater facilities, and it also provides an efficient planned stormwater management system capable of conveying flows from the uppermost reaches to the outfall. So far, there are twenty-one drainage basin plans that have been adopted. Well, we have Box Elder on there, and actually, we're waiting for the adoption of that. And that's why I'm here speaking with you today. But since the late nineteen eighties, the city, in conjunction with, I think, Pennington County, has gone through the effort of doing a very good job of drainage basin design planning. And these are the efforts that have been made. Here's kind of a map. It's a little busy, but it shows all the sub-basins listed in the previous slide and their location in and around the city of Rapid City. As one would imagine, we have a lot of areas outside of the city that drain into the city. To be, to do the planning correctly, you've gotta look at the entire basin. All of the Drainage Basin Design Plans that I showed you on the previous two slides are tributaries to Rapid Creek with the exception of the Box Elder Plan. That's in the northeast part of the community, and obviously, it drains to Box Elder Creek. As I stated before, started in nineteen eighty-nine and through this year. And I would anticipate, as the community continues to grow, we'll continue to add drainage basin design plans in areas outside the community to provide the, the type of planning and direction that we need to ensure that future drainage is adequately addressed. Here's just a list giving some specifics about the individual plans, the years that they were done, the firms that did the design plans, and then the entity. As you can see, there's three there that were the Pennington County Drainage Commission. Actually, it was, the official name was the Western Pennington Flood Management Commission, which the city of Rapid City was a part of. So, there's three plans there that stick out a little bit. The city's growing that way, so eventually, they'll all be in the city limits. Okay, now comes the technical part of the presentation. What's all contained in a Drainage Basin Design Plan? You have, you have to start with the basins or the sub-basins. So, the drainage basins are delineated. Well, what's a drainage basin? I'll show you that in a little bit. You know, Rapid Creek from Rapid City upstream, there's, I believe, a hundred ninety-two square miles that drain into Rapid City in the Rapid Creek drainage basin above Rapid City. That's the effort that we take on these drainage basin design plans, too, is to determine the total basin size from the point that it dumps into the receiving body and then break it into sub-basins. After that effort is done, then existing and future land use based on adopted plans that the city has, the comprehensive plan, any future land use plans, that information is necessary to determine what type of runoffs can be expected. In addition, street classification, because there's separate criteria for how much water can run over the top of a collector road versus an arterial road. Soil classification is also important as far as the type of runoff that can be expected. And then, wetlands, certainly, we have wetlands in the community. Part of the goal of the Drainage Basin Design Plan is to not destroy those wetlands. It's to preserve them as well as incorporate them into any planning effort that we have. And then, also, the FEMA, FEMA mapping is typically adjacent to or, or contained within a Drainage Basin Design Plan as well, too. And I'll get into that a little bit, a little further. From, once all that information has been collected, then the design planning effort, and it's more computer modeling than anything. As I stated before, there's a hydrologic component, which means you have a storm event. The city of Rapid City uses a hundred-year storm, which actually doesn't occur once every hundred years. There's a one percent chance every year that that storm would occur. And then, we route those flows from that storm onto the sub-basin or basin, and that tells you how much water in a volume typically cubic feet per second can be expected to runoff during that storm event. And then, from there, we can identify how big of a channel or how big of a structure do you need to carry that water through the basin. And then, that also, so it helps in sizing our detention cells. We try to, the goal of the Drainage Basin Design Plan, as well as consistent with, consistency with state statute, is to try to keep those peak flows to predeveloped conditions. So, detention cells are necessary for that, to knock those peak flows down so that downstream properties aren't negatively impact. And then, the, the final effort in a Drainage Basin Design Plan is, as I mentioned before, the cost estimating and prioritization for construction. Okay, what's drainage basin? It's an area of land where all surface water from rain or snow or any other type of precipitation converges to a single point at a lower elevation. There's a good example of one there. Next slide, once again, drainage basins typically have natural boundaries defined by the shape of the land. When you get into urban environments, those boundaries can be changed artificially by man and by development. That's another goal, is to not do what we call inter-basin transfers or to take water from one basin and change the land so drastically that you're shoving it over onto another basin that's next to it and causing problems there. The first drainage basin design plans back in the eighties used the best available data to delineate the basins. Here's a, I believe, this is a picture of our Deadwood Avenue Drainage Basin Design Plan. They used USGS quad maps with the ten-foot contour lines to delineate the basins. It was the best available method that they had at doing that at the time, and it was very effective. As we've come along in time, though, for instance, this year and with the Box Elder Drainage Basin effort, the city of Rapid City with our GIS and elevation data that we get from our Rapid Map GIS effort, we received LiDAR data, which is more or less radar, but it's from an airplane, and it detects the elevation of the land, and it gives you very accurate land elevations. And from that, the effort in delineating our drainage basins is much improved over using the old quad map method. As I stated before, the, you, you take a basin such as Rapid Creek or any of our drainage basin plans that we have, and you have a fairly significant-sized basin. Well, you, you've gotta break it down into manageable chunks. This is a portion of the Box Elder Creek Basin. The entire outline in the bottom, bound by the dark line, is part of the Box Elder Creek Basin. And then, all the little polygons inside of there are sub-basins that were defined. And those sub-basins are typically determined using natural topography, existing or man-made barriers, existing or future stormwater facilities, and existing or future road crossings. And this goes back to the elements of the plan or the data that I had talked about early on in the presentation, where you take the land use as well as soil properties and street classification to help delineate those sub-basins. As you can see, looking at the sub-basins in the upper-right portion of this photo, they're not naturally shaped. There's a lot of them that are defined by roads. So, that's an important part of the planning process is to identify not only the existing roads, but where future roads are gonna go for planning purposes. And then, the soil type. Once again, the type of soil that you have affects how much water can soak into it during a storm event. Therefore, if you have soils that have higher permeability, you're gonna get more runoff for those soils. So, all of these components are, are part of the modeling that's done to determine how much water runs off. I had mentioned wetlands earlier. Components of our new plans now consist, any delineated wetlands. And as I said, the goal is to preserve those and to even enhance them as part of the Drainage Basin Design Planning Process. FEMA. City of Rapid City is a participant in, in the National Flood Insurance Program. In fact, we do a very good job and have a very good rating with the National Flood Insurance people about how we manage our floodplains in and around the city of Rapid City. Years ago, the, when the city adopted the original Drainage Criteria Manual, the method that was used to determine floodplains in Rapid City was not a valid FEMA method. So, over the years, we've had two separate efforts, if you will. We've had the FEMA floodplain mapping and then our Drainage Basin Design Plan efforts, and they didn't match. With the adoption of our infrastructure criteria in, in two thousand and eight, we're moving closer for our efforts in our design planning to at least match the modeling that FEMA requires for floodplains. They will never be the same, I need to disclose that, because FEMA could change it any minute. And we can't respond that quickly with updating all twenty-one of our plans to have the same type of modeling effort that FEMA has. So, with that being said, any part of a, a planning effort for city design plans for drainage, we take a look at the FEMA and incorporate the boundaries that they have set in there just so both sets of requirements people are looking at when development occurs. I've stated a lot of this already. The, the design criteria in twenty twelve was a update and adoption of the City Design Criteria Manual, and that updated all the drainage that was done from the nineteen eighty-nine Drainage Criteria Manual. The basins that were done prior to twenty twelve use the old criteria. Typically, if somebody comes in and wants to do a revision, we ask them to update it to the new criteria. The flows that we've seen between the two different criteria are very similar. There's not a drastic change there. So, that's good, that both methodologies are kind of proven that they come with the same result. So, that gives us high confidence that the numbers that we see in these efforts are, are reliable. And then, as far as the methodology for running the models, simulate, simulate a storm, and, and that storm is typically a two, ten, and a hundred-year storm. Determine how much is gonna runoff in that sub-basin or basin, and then route that through the network of conveyance elements. And when I say conveyance elements, that could be a pipe, a ditch, a box culvert, anything that conveys that water across the ground surface. I got a little ahead of myself there. Keep going. Here's an example of an early design plan, nineteen ninety. It was all hand-drawn, but it's still valid. Sound methodology that still works today. But the hand-drawn schematic showing the major drainage channels, all of these little nodes that you see labeled on here, I know you can't read those, but those represent either a junction where flows are coming together or some type of facility like a channel or a box culvert or detention cell. The modeling effort was still done by computer, obviously. The Box Elder Plan, now with better technology, we have much easier way of displaying the information. With the computer power that we have today, we can load aerial photos in there so people can see exactly where they are instead of relying on a hand-drawn schematic on a sheet of paper. So, this, this is an example of an element identified in the Box Elder Plan. Shows you a nice overhead aerial plan view of what the element is. And then, there's also, were pictures taken on the ground showing what that element looks like on the ground. In addition to that, the design flows that I mentioned about are all listed for this particular element as well as what the size and length and any type of improvements that might be necessary. For instance, this one was, was analyzed, and it said required improvements. No improvements are necessary. So, this natural drainage going down here, some of it may be constructed, some of it may be natural, is adequate for the, the design flows that we require as part of our planning effort. Here's an example from nineteen eighty-nine. All of that information was in text. You had to read through here to glean, you know, it gave a description of where it was at. So, you'd have to refer from the textual portion of the design plan back to the schematic to kind of get an idea where it was. And then, it went through there and identified what improvements were necessary, if any, what type of flows would be expected, and so on and so forth. And then, detention cells. Those are important, as I stated earlier, to knock the peak flows down. State law recognizes, or state drainage law recognizes, that when development occurs, you're gonna have more runoff. You cannot do development without increasing your runoff. But it's the manner in which it runs off which is important. You don't want those peak flows to be greater than what they were pre-development. So, that's the importance of having detention cells as part of our planning effort. And another thing to consider about detention cells is they need to be dispersed throughout the basin. You can't just have one detention cell in the bottom part of the basin and expect it to adequately manage the stormwater runoff for a couple of reasons. It would have to be so big that it's gonna take a lot of extra land to be able to construct it and, and have it function adequately. So, all of the plans that we have on the books show multiple areas for stormwater detention. They're typically in the upper, middle to upper parts of the basin. That's where they're most effective. And they also, with our two thousand and nine stormwater quality, they also, if built today, we incorporate stormwater quality treatment to try to clean the water before it exits the detention cell. I've stated this a couple of times already, the, the plans also contain estimates. Once they get done analyzing all of those elements, if there's improvements needed, they, they say, okay, well, you need to build a, for instance, a culvert forty-eight-inch diameter for a thousand feet to convey that stormwater. They'll identify what the cost and whatever today dollars are for that improvement. So, in summary, Drainage Basin Design Plan provides a conceptual plan for stormwater management system and are intended to identify general location for stormwater facilities. management system and are intended to identify general location for stormwater facilities. Improvements may not follow the exact outline of the Drainage Basin Design Plan. As facilities are constructed and modifications are made, amendments to the design plan are documented. Once again, it's kind of a dynamic living document. It's no different than our major street plan. The exact location of those facilities aren't identified. It's a planning document. It says generally in this area, you should be doing this. And that's no different from our major street plan to our Drainage Basin Design Plan. There. We're done. I'd be happy to take any questions that you may have on this presentation.
I actually don't have a question, but I, I wanted to let you all know that in the nineteen nineties, I went back to FEMA training several times. And one of the things that, that they stressed at that time was after our flood, we had a mitigation program which included the floodplain and, and all these drainage basin things. And they said we were a model for the United States at that time, and they produced a video, which I'm sure you've seen, Dale, I'm guessing. But it was a very good model, and, and I happened to be there at that time, and they got to ask questions about the flood and how we took care of the drainage through that area right at the time. And, and it was a good experience and, and it just shows that being preventive is, is the way to go, and, and the rest of the nation is, was looking at us at that time. So just wanted to add that.
Excellent. Thank you.
I think we were slated to get an update on the Box Elder Drainage as well. Thanks for holding the open house, two of both of you.
Sarah?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. If I may just clarify for item eleven, we have two intents, one to give you a overview of the open house that was held, and then secondly, to request that the Planning Commission sponsor the Comprehensive Plan Amendment applications to adopt the Box Elder Drainage Basin Master Plan. So just two items that are part of number eleven there. On September eighth, staff came forward and requested that the Planning Commission sponsor this amendment, and the discussion coming out of that meeting was that we should have an open house for the area stakeholders and then also provide the training for the drainage basin. So we did have an open house on October twentieth. We had really, really positive feedback and a great turnout. There were over two dozen people that came. Representatives from the consulting firm were there, city staff were there, and there was a lot of discussion from the neighborhood, or neighborhood, it's quite a large area, but from the people who live in the planning area, asking questions about their property and how this plan might impact them. And it was a very dynamic meeting, and we were really happy with the results. So with that, we'd like to ask that the Planning Commission sponsor this plan. On behalf of Public Works, the Planning Department will bring that forward if you agree.
Thanks, Sarah. Any questions, comments on that from the commission?
Yeah.
I think what we're needing is for the Planning Commission to sponsor the study. Thank you.
So Karen made the motion to sponsor this, bringing forward the drainage plan. Is there a second to that motion? Galen seconded the motion? All those, well, further discussion of the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Last item, I, this is mine because I didn't pay attention to the calendar and I'm traveling the Wednesday before Thanksgiving on our next meeting. I just wanted to encourage everyone to check their calendars, unlike me, and let Andrea know early if possible if we'll have enough people for that meeting. Karen's gonna be here, so the chair is covered. At least have that.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
We have continued items to that meeting and we will be holding a meeting November twenty-third. But for the sake of the applicants and those in the neighborhood that may choose to attend to comment, we wanna ensure that we do have quorum so we can actually hear the items. So if all of you could just check your calendars, and of course Andrea will be reminding you two to, to let her know whether or not you can attend. If, if we do have issues, then we'll work through those at the meeting and we'll let the applicants know in advance if we don't have quorum.
Thanks, Vicki.
I'm fifty-fifty if I'll be here. Well, I think I may be in Watertown. I'm not sure yet.
All right. Further discussion? Look for a motion to adjourn. Galen made the motion to adjourn. Lynn has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.